Six o'clock, call the September twenty-third meeting to order, ask for particular.
DeVorak?
Here.
Gogol, here. Walters?
Here.
Anderson?
Here.
Sarchet?
Here.
First item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. I have no additions or corrections. I take motion.
Motion approved.
Roll call please.
Sarchet?
Yes.
DeVorak?
Yes.
Gogol?
Yeah.
Walters?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next item, swear and ceremony for our new city manager, Chelsea Huesman. We're gonna step down.
Okay.
Bob came just for this today. Remember the drill?
I think so.
All right, remember which hand?
Left.
There you go. All right, perfect. We've done this the wrong way before, so.
That's okay.
Raise your other hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Chelsea Huesman.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And I will faithfully and impartially.
Faithfully and impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all of the duties of the city manager for the city of Polk City, Iowa.
Discharge all of the duties of city manager for the city of Polk City, Iowa.
As now or hereafter required by law.
As now or hereafter required by law.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I think you're the first one to have done this too, and have achieved. So she'll have more to say later. Next up, Mr. Bob Brownell, Supervisor, Polk County.
Thanks, Jason, Mr. Mayor, Councilman, Robert Brownell, Polk County Board Supervisor, reading to the county. Jason Badger, I mean, asked me to come up tonight, give a county update. So, sorry I've been up here for a while, but I wanted to catch you caught up on what's going on in the county, at least, at least I, how my affect Polk City and folks here. Just to kind of remind you, maybe, there's four areas I work in. We're big enough in Polk County that we kind of get to choose areas to work in. And the ones I have, I work in, kind of coincide with some other folks who we tend to cross paths a bit, but. Four areas that I work in a lot are mental health and developmental disabilities. It's kind of umbrella. Mental health kind of is an umbrella over developmental disabilities and emotional challenge. Brain injury, substance abuse. They all kind of, they're, they're, some of those siloed, I'm not getting into those kind of details. Those are kind of, it's an area I work in quite a bit. Refugees and immigration, I'm gonna talk about that a little bit tonight with you, and, but that's, takes a lot of my time. Human trafficking is one of my areas, and also rescue, all those rescue, by the least dark of the, of the three. But although refugees has rewards too. And then I, there was one more that kind of came along because I kind of lightheartedly thought I'll take this on and, you know, kind of be an easy thing, pretty much a layup, it resonated a little bit. And that was the nine-one-one work. Wrong.
That's good for you, yeah.
Turned out to be all encompassing, and it's taken up tons, tons more of my time than I thought, so, you know, I gave what you pay for, I guess. The area that I want to talk to you about that falls under that category of radios right now, and there's been quite a bit of talk about the radio systems and everything, and, you know, maybe for Chelsea's benefit to, to certain extent. We have two different radio systems here in Metro Des Moines. One of them is Raycom, one of them is both good systems. Polk County Dispatch uses Raycom radios. Westcom, which is the western suburbs of Urbain Dale, Clive, West Des Moines, and Waphe and Norwap use Motorola, and in Des Moines is just recently shifted from, from Raycom. So, two of the three PSAPs, the dispatch centers, use Motorola and one uses Raycom, which is us. So there's been some discussion about, you know, is that the right way to go? Should it be just radio systems? Should these two make sense? What, is that, is it really the longest, long-term strategy and those kinds of things? And those are legitimate questions that people have. One thing that kind of brought this up, and may have an effect on you at some point. May not too. This is a lot more in Jim's area, fire and rescue, but probably, but Clive, I represent two of the towns of Westcom, by the way, Clive and Urbain Dale, but two of those, those two towns have taken what they call closest unit dispatch, and what that is, is if a nine-one-one gets called at Westcom and there's an incident somewhere, the computer picks out the closest unit regardless of who's city it's in between Clive and Urbain Dale. And the computer can dispatch the unit too, they don't do that, but they could. So, and it's worked great. There's hundreds of cross-border calls going on over there. This thing, system has worked spectacularly, so, so it's been a great experiment on their part, but they're both Westcom, makes it easier. Johnston, and, which also has the Grimes private department, so Johnston Grimes wants to do the same thing, but Urban. They have been unable to do that because we have a different CAD system than Westcom, this CAD system for dispatch. So I think for a long time, and, and Trace and Jim could, you know, throw in, throw in their two cents probably, but I think for a long time, a lot of folks saw it originally as a firefighter firefighter EMS, that radios were the problem, not the CAD systems. As we've investigated this further, it's turned out to be more the CAD systems than the the radio systems, and Westcom is the odd man out on this one because they use a thing called Crytek software. Des Moines and Polk County use Integra, which is a very high-end software system for, for nine-one-one. So it may be that what we need to do is for Westcom to come over to Integra or their software that can connect the two systems together. Interoperability is good. The radios that are gonna get up here in Polk City from Polk County are gonna be Phase Two P-25 radios, the toggle, just a toggle that can talk to Westcom. It'll be very easy. It doesn't solve the CAD system problems so much, which isn't really a concern of yours. But that's ultimately, for this closest unit dispatch kind of theory, that's probably what needs to be done. Now, we've let some RFPs out for a consultant to come in and kind of give us some guidance as to what's the best long-term solution for Metro. And the Metro being not just Polk County, but Dallas County and some others too, so. So there's, there's a lot of population here, and, and so what's the best, you know, way to do it? We'll make a decision on those. RFPs are all back-end, four companies have been on it, they're all four very good. Westcom and Des Moines had experience with, with two of them, good experience, so I think we'll, we'll get a good strong player out of that, and, and that, that's gonna solve some guidance problems, problems with there, and so, but. You know, it's, it's interesting because Westcom by itself, would, if it was a zone city, it's like our city. Polk City's, Polk County's clients, which includes you, would also be the second largest city in Iowa. So we're dealing with huge population this year, so we need to get it right. Twenty years ago or so, twenty-five years ago, excuse me, everybody had their own standalone dispatch system. Three years, I don't know how many systems were out there, but over ten dispatch centers across Polk County, which is ridiculous, so. The consolidation has continued, has been very good, I think, for the citizens and for, for, for the troops on the front line too, for that matter, so. So Westcom's consolidated a lot, Polk County's consolidated a lot, Des Moines, not so much, they've always been on their own. The next question is, can these systems operate within the state system? And that's the next, you know, kind of not problem, but next challenge. They say system is small, and is growing, and one of the ideas was, and I know this will be kind of fleshed out by the consultant, that's our, our study, but one of the questions was, can, can anybody hook up to the state system? And can we hook up to them, and what happens if, do that solve some of these problems? The answer is probably not, at least not right now. Cedar Rapids was turned down by the state system. Cedar Rapids has a Motorola radio, but was turned down by the state system because they have 2,400 radios, and state system can't take on 2,400. So, you're out, CR, until, you know, sometime in the future. Also, we were told Polk County, if they wanted to come onboard, would be turned down because we have 1,400 ourselves, and so, then we would need to transfer over. So, you know, the state system will get there eventually, but it's not there yet, so that's not really a solution. So I think there are some folks within, some committees that thought this was the solution, probably not. So the next question might be, well, what do you need two radio systems for? And, you know, one reason why, in our case, in the case of Polk County, we do a lot of prisoner transfers and a lot of cross-county type stuff, which are all regular. So, they have two systems, two good systems, not such a bad thing. But they need to be able to operate together for interoperability, and you need to be able to communicate with Grimes, you need to be able to communicate with Anthony and, and Polk County for that matter. You know, so fortunately, you're all under one dispatch system, so that's not challenging, but, you know, they're all built for a part because everything kind of flows together out here, you know, the boundaries don't, you know, people that are evading the law, or there's a fire or emergency, something like that, borders don't really count. It's, they're first, and that's all the constituents care about, is somebody competent getting there first, so. Anyway, that's what's going on with radios right now. The nine-one-one committee continues to be a time-consuming thing, and probably will be for a while yet, but anyway. Trace and Jim, they participate in it and hopefully are up to speed. What's going on?
And you guys just approved something down there? Here, when, when was it? What did you guys just?
Yeah, we did. There was, the communities were putting before them the idea of extending their contract to 2030, and getting new radios, and you start paying a service fee, basically. In, in your case, it'd be 2024. Or, you know, Plan B would be, you don't want to per, the state to extend the contract, and we start charging some service fees starting in 2021, which is the same as July 1st of 2020. So there's one community that hasn't, you know, agreed to go along yet. I think they will, it's Johnston. They've got some unique, you know, I mentioned the Johnston Grimes, that's a little unique, so. I think we'll work through it. That's gonna be solved by October 7th, and they say, and so we'll take it up on them. But, you know, we'll, we'll get there. It's, I think for them, the closest unit dispatch is important piece. I know that Grimes has, you know, their ideas are their own, as far as their own fire and rescue goes, and of course, Grimes is under Polk County law enforcement, so, you know, obviously, they're gonna be under that program, so. So that's where that is, but the county's paying for all the radios. The service fee amounts to not 100% of cost of the radios in your town, for example, 5%. So we try to make it affordable for everybody. Obviously, you don't want to go back, set up your own dispatch center and all that, that's not technically feasible, probably, so. Something that's worked out well for, anyway. Refugees and immigration, I'll try to touch on this quickly, but we're, we have, there's a lot of refugees in Metro. I don't know, I don't think, I talked to Dan Mark a couple of weeks ago, and there's not a lot of refugee population in Polk. But in the other portions of the metro, there's a lot. Urbain Dale speaks 56 languages right now, Des Moines schools are 100 languages, I think. West Des Moines schools are 56, 58 languages, so there's, it's not just a Des Moines thing, it's across Metro. And the demographics are interesting. A lot of Southeast Asians, Burmese that we have here. They're settling all over the place, that they're, they've been here long enough that they've started buying houses in Eastern Clive and moving in there. They've been very, very successful, very hardworking, and, and folks, someone's doing, they want to be self-sufficient, which is right, obviously. But they're doing well. The biggest ethnic group coming into Metro Des Moines right now is French speaking Africans and Congo specifically, to Central Africa also. So, if you speak French, we've got a place for you. We, we, we communicate. So, you know, with the number of refugees that we have coming in, and also we've got Sudanese, we've got Somalis, we've got not just French speaking Africans, those. Also Middle Eastern, you know, Burmese are a large demographic coming in here. And, you know, Southeast Asian in general, so. So that's, it's all great, because we're, you know, we need those folks to come in and be part of our workforce and part of our future. Our companies want to grow and prosper, need a workforce, a good labor force. One of the things we deal with a lot with refugees is upscaling their skills. That guy just a few weeks ago, or a month, a couple of months ago, KCCI did a good story on, he was an OBGYN in Uganda. Comes here, and of course, he doesn't, he's not on OBG land here, and so he needs to get a job to feed his kids, so he goes work at Burger King. And so you have them at OBG land, work at Burger King, it's kind of a waste of talent, not, not against Burger King, obviously, but, you know, OBGYNs are important, so. Anyway, we got the guy, not we, but Polk County, but we collectively got the guy on Prime Mountain, he's back in the back in that healthcare business again, and making 20 or 25 bucks an hour, and so he's doing well. But to get the next step, he's gonna take his boards and pay his residency, which costs money. So we're trying to figure out a way with, you know, for refugees that, that need that. Now, they're not all OBGYNs, there's all lawyers, teachers, engineers, those kinds of things come out of these countries, and, and they have to take boards here and get their, get their skills certified here in the United States. Nobody's against that. The standards are a standard reason to show up here and say, I'm a doctor, just make it doc. So, so we were in favor of the standards, but there's, there's boards, you have to take your costs money, and that's got to do, so we're trying to figure out a way to pull it together. Anyway, the welcome center will be a bricks and mortar building. We're working on that right now. RFPs are back, they've been graded, we're gonna be having a public meeting next week. The welcome center will be serving the same purposes as if any of you moved to Cambodia and didn't know a language, didn't know anything about it. Or a doctor, how to come to school, use care of my kids when I'm gone, where to get a job, all that, and, you know, how do I, how do I take my boards and, and how do I improve myself? I want to be a American citizen, how do I do that? So, the welcome center will do that. Now, there's other welcome centers across the country. This is the first one, unique and out of respect. They're, they're all a little bit different. We like the best of the same of us, and it's called International Institute, and they have a lot of services. ESL, micro loans, childcare, a lot of, you know, culinary arts, all kinds of stuff, so very interesting. Omaha, and is pretty much a call center, and, you know, it's, you kind of envisioned this to be a walk-in kind of thing, but in Omaha's case, that's how they envisioned it, but it turned out to be more a call center. In both cases, ethnic-based communities run the place, not, not the great white father, that's not what we're about. We're trying to have ethnic people in charge of this so that they can take the reins and, and do a good job, build some capacity and, and help each other, so, but we're gonna be obviously behind it in the financial way. Three entities that are working on this hardest are Polk County, City of Des Moines, even the rights division, and excuse me, greater than my partnership. So I'm, I'm very optimistic about how that's gonna go. I think it's gonna be great. I think we're gonna be even more attractive to immigrants, refugees. These are all legal immigrants, you know, they're, they come here as refugees, asylees, and, you know, they want to put down roots, they want to be on a government goal, they want to be self-sufficient, and they want to, you know, provide families, they're really great people. So I'm very optimistic this is gonna work out well for us, and for everybody else.
Where's that gonna be at?
We don't know. Now, that's not a flippant answer. We, we've got some places to look at, obviously, but we want to get the operator of the welcome center onboard first, and then have them make part of the decision. Rather than us make the decision and say, okay, replace out. So I mean, there are places that, that makes some sense, and places that don't make so much sense. We'll see where it goes. I guess the next two things, one of them I wanted to say for my good friend, council member Sergeant here, but one of them is the levy. We're gonna be looking at dequusing, dequusing the levy substantially next year. Everybody heard about the big assessment increases and everything that went on across Polk County, not just Polk City, but across Polk County last year. This is the year that all that catches up to people on property taxes, if we don't do something, but, so. So we'll be cutting our levy, I think I will be, well, we're, we're hoping for at least 40 cents, could be more. But that's, you know, the idea is that we can kind of even that out. We have new legislation in place, of course, for that, and so we may, I don't know how this can turn out, because the economy's so strong, we could end up with cutting the levy and still the budget be, you know, 2% more than what it was last year. It's, wait and see.
Where are you guys at now?
Where, where you guys, it would be about 808. So, in that range, probably. I don't know exactly, but, you know, it's been, been there for a while. And it's, that's great that it's been solid for a while, but, you know, when assessments go up, it's probably the same. There's that. Finally, last but not least, and I'm, I'm not taking any comments, or perhaps you guys want to grow out of me, but Rob was concerned, I was told by Mayor Morris that Cedarville Road and Bridge Road and Beaver was a problem. And so I looked into that a little bit, and the DOT's solution is to go to four lanes on Cedarville Road. Widen, basically widen more lanes, and, which would call, which would kind of solve the stacking problem. So that was kind of my thinking as I was driving up here today, and, but I, and I've driven up here a bunch of times across Bridge, you know, Bridge and all that. And across that four-way intersection, but I never really looked at it with the eye of, well, what would be likely if they had four lanes on both sides. And I guess, you know, theoretically, that seems to make sense because it would, it would eliminate some stacking, but when you look at the hog it's gonna, I don't see how, it's gonna, it's still stop-and-go traffic all the way, and I don't know that they're, that they're engaged in the idea of traffic signals there, but that may be, I don't know if you see that, if that happened. There's some other things going on in that area, having the DFP, mostly doing, have to do with 121st Street, closing that down, and then having the traffic come kind of through the new annex area of Johnston, and all that, which would drive more traffic up on, on Beaver. So, but the board supervisor says, kind of said no, they don't like that idea of putting more traffic down on 121st. But flashers like to have a, a mirror closer to Grimes, which has worked pretty well, really. I mean, the intersection is dangerous, there's no doubt about that, but it's not, it's non-signal. People kind of jump, they'll, you know, jump across. So I think we could, we can at least for now do, control that with some traffic signals, and so that will not affect Beaver Road as much as that. But still, there's gonna be a lot of traffic up there. I mean, Johnston's gonna get in the next, eventually, they'll get their Zinia water problems worked out, and they'll have it in the next, and be a, a lot of houses, man, and there's gonna be a lot of traffic up there, so. At some point, we're gonna have to be talking, you know, about traffic signals, in my opinion. Like I said, when I was driving up there, I was thinking, four, four lanes are probably the way to go, but I'm not so sure. So, we'll keep working on that. You know, we're always trying to work on stuff. I remember being here one day when he, he wasn't here telling you guys that the traffic signal here on, which is by the DAS now, was not necessary. Obviously, everybody knew it was, so I think we'll get that done eventually, takes some politics, probably. We, we're capable of doing that. So we'll work on you with that, we'll work on that. So anyway, that's my spiel. Any questions or comments? Welcome, Chelsea, Polk City, good luck with these guys.
Thank you.
You're the welcoming committee.
Yeah, I am.
Appreciate you being here. Anybody got anything for Bob?
Thank you for your work. Yep. All right. Well, thanks for having me, I appreciate it, and I'll be back sooner next time.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Good to see you. Next item is public comments. It's time and place for comments for any item of those in the public hearing. If you wish to speak, please come to voting, state your name and address for the record. Do you want any audience who wish to be heard? Hearing none or seeing none, moving on to the next item, consent agenda, take a motion.
Sergeant?
Take, roll call please.
Gogol?
Yeah.
Walters?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
DeVorak?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next item, business item, item A, second reading of ordinance 2019-1400, amending Chapter 65, stopper yield required. Amending Chapter 69, parking regulations. Take a motion, please.
Second.
Second.
Discussion.
Question on that, I know it's not related to this, did we have a, a more directly adjacent to this? Some concerns on the water lines, have we connected them? I think Catherine was coordinating that, do you know anything about that?
I'm not sure. I bought a hog drive.
Uh, yeah, I can talk to you about it afterwards.
Okay.
I don't know, it doesn't have anything to do with this, just reminding me to make sure that, that connection was made.
Okay.
Thank you.
Roll call please. I had first and a second.
Walters, second though? Okay.
Sure.
Walters?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
DeVorak?
Motion carries. Next item is reports and particulars. Staff. Anybody? Trace?
Uh, you saw on there we had a deer hunter and property approved. That was the only person that met all the requirements by the deadline this year, but we'll work harder next year to get some more people through the process and have some more public ground opened up. It was just learning experience for all of us, getting this kicked off this year. And another thing was, we finished our junk vehicle abatement that we started in the spring. It's a long process. We had 40-some cars initially. Thirty-eight people abated voluntarily. We worked with them and got them hooked up with volunteer organizations to come and take the cars and, and for free, sort of costing the thing. I don't know if everybody utilized that, but Jenny, Jenny was, did actually most of the work. I did the field work. Taking the pictures and making a spreadsheet, and Jenny did the rest of the heavy lifting on it, and we only had impound two cars from one property. And the people weren't home, and I've heard nothing about it, so, but you drive around and it looks a lot better.
Would agree with that. Thank you for your work on that. And so.
And Jenny too.
Yeah, no, everybody, whoever was involved. So what do you do moving forward on this?
I think we're doing an annual deal, I think every spring. Yep, just, it'll be a lot easier now, we got the majority of them taken care of, so.
Good. Thanks for running with that. Library, you filled half the packet today, so do you have anything to add? No? After all of that, you don't have anything to add? Just giving you a hard time. Uh, let's see, Bridget, you want to add anything?
Yeah, I'm here just really on behalf of the school, the student council advisory, Liz Heathor, and then Ally Promley, the student council that was over the homecoming parade, just wanted to make sure that everyone is aware that they appreciate the time and the talent that it took to pull off the first homecoming parade in Polk City. Public Works with getting streets closed and keeping everything safe, Trace with police and getting everyone coordinated and chief, which 20 minutes before the parade, hey, you want to jump in? So thank you. So they hope that it continue to be a great event in Polk City.
So I'll piggyback on that and say, so I talked to, well, we stuck around and waited till all the kids were off the squares and make sure that there was not stragglers, and so. But we talked to Dan Mark then, and I talked to him a couple of times here since then as well, and as well as a handful of staff members up there, and they couldn't be more thrilled, and I actually spoke with him this afternoon again, just to verify, nothing else has come up. And they were absolutely thrilled and tickled with how it went, and so I would expect this to happen again, and so thank you to all public works. I talked to Randy, and I appreciate all you guys did, so, you deserve an extra pat, so. Anyway, great job with everybody that was involved with that. None of that. Welcome.
Thank you.
Sure.
Yeah.
Sorry, down here today.
Uh, I was just gonna, you know, homecoming was, I wasn't able to go, I saw it on Snapchat.
Snapchat?
Thank you.
Really? All your social media presence?
Somebody, somebody, so I, it looked, it looked awesome, in fact, doing that, there wasn't even a pipe dream a year ago. You know, nobody even thought of it, so. I think that's great, and also wanted to formally welcome Chelsea to, to the great Polk City family, and all of us that are here in the community as well, so. Great to have you in the scene, and now we can start working together and make this, this city great.
All right, I'm, I don't know what everybody's gonna do without a major event planned for a couple of months, maybe, but.
She's already talking about.
We're gonna weather.
No, she's square like, she's square like.
But I think maybe the student council should be in charge of weather now, on the warm, but no rain was fabulous, but. No, thanks again to everybody involved in this school, and everybody that showed up. I, I was there, I got my kids out of school, it was very cool event to participate in, the square was just filled with kids and supporters, so it was very awesome, so thanks to all, all that were involved.
Don't forget about buses, 24 buses.
I cannot imagine. At the end, when I took my two children home, my son, well, one, one friend, but I said I bless all the teachers, the coordinators, the bus people. I know that was probably a very stressful afternoon for them, and thanks to all of them for making it successful, so. And then, yes, welcome, Chelsea, good to see you, good to have you here, and we're excited to move ahead.
Welcome, Chelsea. Can't wait to start working on huge projects together. Got a lot of, a lot going on in this community, so. Take the reins. Thank you to everyone that participated in parade last week, that was, that was an exciting event. Everyone did a great job. And then last Friday morning, I attended the Iowa Green Infrastructure Conference. This is something that I think we need to put very much on our radar and forefront. It's an opportunity for us to help residents as well as business owners, public works, in an effort to hold back stormwater, maintain stormwater, decrease our infiltration within our sanitary system. There's a, an effort throughout the metro to have stormwater utilities pay for a portion of this, if the community, specifically residents or commercial entities want to participate in this. I think we need to be thinking very hard about a stormwater utility within Polk City. And then I think we also have the opportunity to use SRF dollars since we do pay in the WRA, so that we can avoid flooding events like we've received here in the past few years.
I'll come back to you. Ron?
Welcome.
Thank you.
Glad to have you here. I, I heard.
Glad to have you here. I, I heard very good things about the Homecoming Parade. I've, the only grumblings I've heard were from people that don't live in town, so. Very positive. The school people are all poos, well, very well, and I think that it speaks well for Polk City and our employees especially. So, thank you.
Nothing new for me. Well.
Excellent. Anybody else have anything else with the good of the comments? All right. I need a motion to go into closed session under Code Iowa, Chapter 21, official meetings open to public. Roll call.
Anderson?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
DeVorah?
Yes.
Yeah, Walters?
Yes.
Motion carries. We'll take five.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I think you should stay. I think you'd be good.